So might as well come on up.
All right, so we're going to swap things and do Houston High Security Improvements first.
You've got the attachments in the, in any meeting from the bid package that went out, as well as the bid responses and the bid tabulation sheet. This is for three, really three scopes of work here at Houston High School. The first one is to take out a window and put a door that goes directly into the main office here at Houston High School. The second one is to fence in the courtyard area where students use as a passage between spaces and also to eat lunch. And then the third one is to put fencing between the main building and A building, all with the goal of improving security from a fiscal standpoint here at Houston High School. The low bidder was Grinder Taber Grinder. They're certainly more than capable to handle a job. This is a small job for them. They were the second most bidder on our elementary school next to Baldwin and Shell, so.
They do big projects also.
They do big projects.
It's a pretty good difference in bid.
And we're excited because one of, one of the things, that's a good question, that they have there is they have their own manufacturing, so when you look at some of the steelwork that's going to happen with the ornamental.
They fabricate their own.
They're able to fabricate that in-house.
Okay.
I was just curious, because it's hard to look from the drawings.
Mm-hmm.
Are they making, are you putting more concrete into cafeteria area or are you just, you're just putting the partition up? What's there?
The partition is going up, but there's also some additional concrete and walk paths that are going as well.
Okay, that was, I saw some additional concrete. And then what, what is, you talked about that this still being fabricated, is it going to have any special design like an H R?
No, it's not that fancy, but.
Ornamental mustangs. I just thought of that.
It'll look very similar to what's at Riverdale in the courtyard, if you've seen that space. Any questions, other questions?
You answered, no.
About those?
That's awesome.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do further business of the budget amendment?
Yes. So, one of the changes that we would like to add is we, there's a increased sales tax revenue that we have to acknowledge, and so one of our requests would be to put that funding into the H R software component. There's a module that they can purchase that actually adds on some special features to our Apple Trax, which does our employee search product, so that's something that they're requesting is to recognize that increased revenue and give them some additional maneuver software.
And what can, what would that additional module, do you know?
It does a few, one of the, it does several things, but one of the things that we're excited about is currently right now when teachers or employees want to log an absence, they have to log into three different portals to do that. This makes it a one-stop shop, so it can talk to, so there's some efficiency. But there's, there's a long list of features that this software.
Okay, okay. No, I got skipped behind lights.
Yes.
Come on in, Sarah. You can sit down.
Yes. You're up. Now breathe for a second.
Sorry, I was coming for a meeting.
Which is the worst traffic in Memphis this time of day, this time of day.
In the rain.
Yes, it's amazing.
We're glad you made it safely.
Okay, so are there any other questions on the budget amendment?
Oh, do we want to add it to the consent agenda then? Or do we want it as a?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what will be a budget that, we will, I mean, it will be?
A D.
A D, so the agenda is amended.
Yes. All of the agendas.
All right. So, and my computer died on the way here, so it's just a whole fun time.
Would you like the hard copy?
Oh, y'all are so sweet. I just, I missed a little description. We actually had a student enroll.
They're new.
I appreciate it. Had a student enroll that does have a service animal. And so it was a perfect time to kind of relook at our service animal policy, because while the former policy is, you know, straight from T S B A, we're looking over it and like saying, okay, putting this into practice now that we actually have someone here who's utilizing the service, which parts of this make sense? And so reviewing it with just legal counsel felt that replacing that policy with some more practical procedures would be of benefit to everyone. So, do y'all have questions about any of the changes?
Yeah, I was going to say, we actually had information on this at one of our conventions. You know, there was a lawsuit, and we actually covered a lot of it, so I was already familiar with it. The changes, was that something that went in line with what y'all had? Actually, all we did was just kind of write it, how we, how we're going to practice it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the previous. They called for travel.
Oh. So this is a process question. Upon approval of the new policy, the old policy naturally is replaced. Okay. And we don't have to include that in the motion?
Oh, you mean as far as waiving, second reading?
No, no. As far as, since you have a policy.
No, as far as getting rid of this one.
Oh, so you're, yes.
And it's not really an amendment to a policy, you completely rewrote the policy.
Replacing.
Replacing.
So rewarding instead of.
My concern, I've already talked to Mr. Landers. So my concern with the motion is that it makes it clear that the old policy, 4.615, is replaced by the newly awarded policy, 4.615.
That makes sense.
Just so there's never any confusion about what.
I did have one question, is it, why, why is this repeated, that last paragraph on both pages?
Is that a great question?
Because it deals with two separate entities.
Student service animals, public service animals.
So, some of the training that we did to you is try to describe the difference between the two, to make sure that our staff was aware, because I think that was, I mean, we got notification that a student was enrolling. Automatically, it was like, okay, we need to get with our students and staff and talk about how to communicate this, and what you can or cannot say, and the difference between the two.
Because the difference is the public services, people from the public bringing in dogs.
Right.
Or public animals, public service service animals versus a student.
I think I was surprised they didn't have to wear a designation.
And I did clear this, because that was one of the, there has been a lot of upticks in the past three years, but that was another thing. We did have a family that came to a meeting who had a, a service animal, and you're like, oh, is the dog going to meet? There's questions you can or cannot ask. We felt like it was really important to make sure we were informed in either case if it was a student or another person from the community coming in.
Totally agree.
Because your first inclination, and I am guilty, A number one, is I was like, oh, that dog's so cute, you know, animal lovers wanting to come over and meet the pet. And I was like, oh, he's doing his work, you know, get yourself together, stay and back up.
So the question is, why don't they need to wear a special harness that identifies them?
If you're in the airport or anything, you normally.
You have to, and I guess my concern is, just, I am that kid, I'm that person too that wants to pet the dog if there's a dog around. But their children are very much aware of that as well, of wanting to pet the dog. But if they see an orange vest or a yellow vest, or whatever the vest is, it identifies this is not the dog you pet. Is there a reason that we're not including, is there a legal, so we're just not allowed to?
It's part of the law. It's part of the ADA, they, in their infinite wisdom, they determine that, that would be too much required requiring the vest, even though, you know, I agree, it makes, to me, much more sense, but the law's very specific on that for service dogs. They are no longer required to wear vests, or any identifying one.
That's a question. But I do love the way we just are very specific, we're talking dogs.
Well, yeah.
There's dogs.
I did notice we've gone from allowing two kinds of animals to.
To one.
A, to, yes.
Again, that's the law.
As opposed to no more horses.
I believe you're correct.
Well, the previous policy allowed.
Yes, yes it did. I think the law was revised.
Okay.
It's gone back and forth the past couple of years.
So we may see the horse come back.
Okay, I'd heard monkey, I've heard monkeys, I've heard all, yeah.
Wasn't it there a few years ago? Yeah, there was a lady that did the ostrich.
I noticed we had a pot belly pig train.
I don't think that ostrich wants to fly that way. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landers.
Thank you.
And the H R.
The H R.
Mr. Haddo, he's coming.
Good evening.
There's only, there's a lot of policies, but there's, there's not very many changes. There's only one change in one policy. It has to do with a term, they used to use highly qualified for, for teachers and their departments to be able to teach, but the state's dropped that phrase, highly qualified. So I thought we'd, we'd drop it in the policies as well. So that's really the only change.
We're just marrying state.
Any questions about any of the other policies that are standing?
I did.
Anybody have anything else to work on before?
I just had to go ahead.
Further business?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask for information from Mr. Manuel about how his meeting with toss went, but, but if there's business to begin first.
Thank you, Mr. Haddo.
I just know, I saw Ms. Crowder come in, I didn't know she had more information for us. Ms. Crowder, do you have more information for us on Community Tour Day of how, if you need us to be plugged in or be there at any time?
So the tours begin at eight thirty sharp. They last until eleven thirty. If you have not been on the tour, I would love to put you on a tour to actually take the tour. If you've already been on the tour, I would love for you to join us in the lobby to greet guests, take driver's licenses, and to hand out thank you packets as they walk out with the G M S T information. So very easy, no homework needed. If you would like to join us, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Crowder.
What time do you expect guests to start arriving, since the tours will start at eight thirty? Are you wanting them to arrive at eight fifteen?
So I would say, if you were trying to beat a crowd, I would get here by eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
Or just shy of getting your afternoon arrival.
Thank you.
I'm waiting to read.
I just, Mr. Manuel, now that open enrollment is closed, do you have any idea when you'll be able to get the board some information about?
Yeah, so we.
When, when the letters will be going out?
We are supposed to meet as a cabinet, I believe, next Tuesday or Wednesday, I want to tell you the exact date.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Super money's this Tuesday.
Yes. So, actually, it's not next Tuesday, Tuesday's Day on the Hill.
That's right.
We should have caught that.
We have to reschedule.
Yeah, so we should be meeting next week. I'll tell you exactly. It's going to take us a few days to go through the, it's a jigsaw puzzle, to look at all the numbers, and I want to be able to tell you, so it should be within the next two weeks, so that I'll give you that information.
Thank you. And then I just, I just have a quick, the board, Ms. Landers, Mr. Manuel and I attended the Pathways Promise with the T S B A workshop, and the information that we gained was, it's going to be very helpful when we do the strategic plan, when we're working towards.
Yes.
Thank you. So it was very good information.
Have we talked about the dashboard?
Yes.
The dashboard is beautiful.
I already have questions.
Okay.
They had an update. Awesome, your conversations with.
So it was, oh, yes. It was a very interesting session. Tomorrow, I'll be driving to Nashville early in the morning for a nine o'clock meeting with the commissioner, you know, I'm the representative, I'm the executive council , so it'll be just me and a small handful of superintendents from across the state, and so I'll be able to ask a lot more information from what Mr. Lee's legislative plans are and what his objectives are going forward. The toss was beneficial because we were actually talking about the new system of the committees at the State Capitol, and as you know, I think that we are going to play an instrumental role in shaping education in the state of Tennessee. Because when we look at Mr. White, who we've developed a relationship, Mark White, over time, he is the House Education Committee Chair. So when bills are coming across his desk and, or we see bills that are moving, it's going to be important for us to have those conversations. Dolores Gresham is, plays the same role on the Senate side, so know that, also in the southwest core area, she represents that area also. So this is going to be an important year for us to really talk about the impacts that we see on education. I know at the time that the bill filing deadline had closed, there were three hundred. I'm sure, I don't know if y'all have gone on the T S B As, to look at that, there were three hundred, but you have to be careful because some of those are caption bills, and so they do not specifically spell out what they're going to be. So I have all inclinations that vouchers in the form of education savings accounts is going to come to the forefront. And I think that one of the things that I'm going to work with my administrative team, cabinet, and also with other superintendents in the area, is to talk about what does accountability look like, and what are the restrictions and guidelines that public schools have to follow in the state of Tennessee? And it is a huge list, because I think we.
We did it, you did it about a year ago.
Yes, but we talk, I mean, in detail, we talk about all the things that we have to do to be a public school, and all the metrics that we have to meet, whether we're talking about special education, preschool level, what we're doing with five oh fours, to talk about all those challenges that we face, and then to take that same money and give it to a private school that doesn't have any of the same regulations is a challenge for us. And we talk about what the impact that it has on teaching staff, what it has on administration. We are already experiencing droughts of teachers across the country, and if a teacher can choose to go work in a private school system for similar pay and not have the same restrictions, that poses a challenge for districts. There are some specifically that, that we talked about, that are concerns for us as the district, and things I think we need to talk about going forward. One being our preschool education program. I'm not sure the exact amount, I'm going to give a horseshoes and hang grenade number there, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we probably received twelve thousand for special ed pre-k from federal funds.
And I was going to say, that's on the high end. It changes year to year. We started off around eight, and we just got additional, like, three or four thousand after they calculated numbers, but it's little to nothing.
So if you think about what's involved in having a special, and we're not talking about voluntary pre-k that you see across the state, just special education preschool, for us to pay for entire programs with teachers and assistance and supplies, and we're talking about twelve thousand dollars that we receive, that's one of those unfunded mandates that we see coming from the state, and how, and we have one at every single schools, there will be one school, Farmington will have two, is that correct? So Farmington will have two, every other school will have one, how are we providing those benefits? That's going to be something that I think that we need to address. A lot of other districts, we're talking about this at the convention, is a concern for them. As we get tighter, how are we supposed to provide the same levels of benefits? So, another one that is a concern for us is the ACE evaluation. And I'd have to pull up the exact terminology. Mr. Blaine, do you remember what it stood for?
Adverse childhood.
Adverse childhood experience. There is a bill being proposed right now that says that before you can suspend or expel any child, there has to be an ACE evaluation. My guess is that this is going to look something like a manifestation for a special needs student or a five oh four student. I don't know how that's going to relate to zero tolerance, so what it essentially means is that we cannot provide discipline to a child if, unless we've done this assessment and they, if they've had an adverse experience in their childhood. That could have large logistic concerns for us in the district, and limit what we're able to do. So know that those are the two that jumped out to me, but there will be lots of other ones that I'm sure we're ready to discuss. Like I said, tomorrow, I'm driving and meeting with the commissioner in person, I will invite her to come here. I think this, this is her eighth day on the job, so she hasn't been in very long, but she's already been out at schools, so I'm going to ask her to come see our schools. I'm going to tell her about Germantown and the great work that we're doing, but also talk about some of our challenges and concerns that we see going forward. So I'll give you more information once, that'll be where I get the real.
The real scoop.
Yes. We had a couple of good speeches and.
Right. Yay. Well, it's just, I'm glad you're going up there again, and you'll have a, a course before we head up there next month.
I think that's kind of the timing of that's good.
And, the resolution.
Yes.
Our voucher resolution. It's fine, and we really want me to be in order to approve an amendment that says education savings account. But they're virtually the same thing.
Yes.
So I don't know if, what y'all want to do about the resolution.
Mr. White did say, they had him as just one of the speakers, that he is opposed to any education savings account unless you see the full length of accountability that we see, which is one of the reasons, I want to say, I want to give you the whole.
Right. I think that's, I think that's the struggle is, I don't think the legislators realize the level of accountability.
Agreed.
That's required of public school systems. They are thinking, probably testing.
Yes.
Which is, you know.
Minimal.
Which is minimal compared to what truly were held to.
That's correct.
And even if, even with that, if they allow them to do something other than ten ready, I would have a problem with that, because then I want, I want us to have that same freedom to do.
Choose a national one?
Let's choose a national.
But that's not enough for us because of S F.
Yeah. Was it last year you put together the whole list of all the laws?
Yes.
And so I think that's a good thing to hand to like Tom Leatherwood, to new people that really have no knowledge at all of what schools have to adhere to, and that is a good list. I think there's probably a couple of things we could add from last year, the lead test and anything.
That's right.
But I think that's a good list to pass on to like Tom Leatherwood especially.
Well, and there's so many new, I mean, our legislators that have, I mean, brand new, more than ever before, the percentage, they said, is greater than it's been in many, many years. But my concern about not having some verbiage that says ESA in the resolution, I still think it's kind of something by a different name to a lot of people, so we don't want to lose, you know, I think people hear vouchers and they think one thing, and then they may hear this, and they may think something else, and I want to make sure that everybody is fully aware.
The wording we used is opportunity scholarship program. So what we could do during the business portion of the meeting is add it to the agenda to amend the resolution, to refer to it as school voucher slash education, what is he calling it? Savings account.
Mm-hmm.
Or you could do edu, create an education savings account slash school voucher, that would probably.
Yeah, I think that'd be an easy thing to do during this.
I think that one.
Okay, that one, do we want to add that?
Do we want to add that, and do we want to put it on consent agenda, or do we want to?
Do you need me to send you the agenda? Do y'all want the resolution?
Would you send the resolution?
The resolution.
I don't want people to get called up and, oh, that's not the same thing. Oh, well, it's not the same thing, but it's on the list of similar. It's, it is, I mean, I'm learning by name.
It just doesn't smell very sweet.
Thank God.
I'd like to have it listed, for sure. Every year, it's a different name, so.
And if we amend this, I will make the changes and send it to you so we can put it in the package.
Thank you.
Men will take opportunity scholarship, because that's not, we're not hearing that anymore.
So she's changing. So we are. Educational savings account slash school voucher. Opportunity scholarship.
Do we want to take opportunity scholarship program out?
Yes.
Yes. Well, what I would do is strike opportunity scholarship and insert educational savings account.
Before school voucher.
Before school vouchers. So it would read educational savings account slash school voucher. It'll work for everybody like that language.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to think that it's important to have it listed.
So that could be nine B.
Or any other similarly titled.
Just to cover all the bases, that's kind of what I, that's the way I was looking at it, like.
Or any other similarly titled funding vehicles.
What do you think? That's right.
It does give us broad latitude.
Yes.
I think, as long as you're making the motion that we're doing, we just need the wording.
I'm just making a suggestion.
No, I mean.
We need the wording.
We need the wording, yeah.
But we do need, I think, education savings accounts must, educational savings accounts must be included, the actual words.
Voucher.
Vouchers, or any other similarly.
Similarly functioning, similarly, similar.
I think the way you, yeah, I think that's where you said it before, that was the best funding mechanism.
Any other similar funding mechanisms?
I can call it whatever I want now. We have a cover.
We'll have our own captioned.
Every year, it's something, seriously, it's been something else every year.
Yeah.
Look under. I mean, they come up, like, I mean, I was, they come up with a name of the dog.
But it's not vouchers, it's an opportunity scholarship. It's not vouchers, it's an education savings account. But it's not vouchers.
It really is a voucher of parents' choice.
Do you want to change the title of the resolution because it says opportunity scholarship?
I will change every reference.
Every comment says that.
Every reference to.
You can have three names on the title.
Might just do school vouchers slash.
Or start with.
We want to call it.
Education savings account slash vouchers.
Yeah, the motion just needs to read that we changed the wording.
Thank you.
All references.
Okay.
Will be changed.
Also, this becomes a long.
Instead of opportunities scholarship pilot programs, I should say educational savings accounts slash vouchers program.
Mr. Manuel just handed out the budget schedule. Is it, I haven't read through it, is it on here where we're going to do it, or are we planning a joint meeting with the mayor and Board of Aldermen to discuss budget this year, or are we going to?
Yes, but it is not on this.
Not on this yet.
Not on this yet. So that is our objective, to have a joint session with them. And this is, is always tentative.
Yep.
So if you have any questions? Any other questions?
I did, just, I wanted, I didn't take the opportunity to segue from Linda's question before we got into the toss recap. I'm just checking, last week when we spoke, we were talking about the end of open enrollment and making sure that people, anybody who had reached out and concerns, just making sure their information was received.
That's right.
Were good.
Yes.
Everybody feels like if they submitted it, they've talked to you or gotten some kind of confirmation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I heard more of that last week since we saw each other, and I just wondered, I knew that there, we were working on some different things to follow up and just to confirm with everybody, but I knew there were a lot of people really worried, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You ready to adjourn to the business?
We are adjourned until the business meeting.
And.
Welcome this evening. The chair would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? This evening I've invited Ms. Oof to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is in the back corner.
That's right.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. This evening we have two amendments to the agenda, added as eight D and nine B. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Ms. Landers made the motion and Ms. Oof seconded. Ms. Supremani, we please call the roll.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Lutte?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we move to the time of recognition and awards, where we get to celebrate our teachers and our students. Ms. Supremani?
Yes.
This year, or this year, this time of year really marks the time where we have competition at all of our schools, whether it's spelling bees, geography bees, to really showcase and highlight our students who have been successful at those schools, and also send them on to future competitions where we historically do very well. And I have all the optimism that we're going to do well again in further competitions. But we would like to recognize those individual school winners, so if I will call your name and come up here, and then once you come up, stand up here, because we wanna get everybody's picture together. So for the spelling bees, at Dogwood, we had Jack Breach, or Beach, excuse me, Jack Beach. You wanna do individuals?
I was just getting an action chat, I promise I'll pass.
Congratulations, if you'll stand right over here. From Farmington, we have Jacob Shellhouse.
He's not here.
He's not here? From Houston Middle School. We have Misha Agrawal. From Riverdale, Sophia Overstreet. And we want to get one picture of all the spelling bee winners together. Spelling bees will all come in. Congratulations to all of you. We also had geography bee winners. We also have geography bee winners. From Dogwood, we have Audrey Savage. From Houston Middle School, Trevor Hodgson. Congratulations. And then from Riverdale, Aditya Narayana. Congratulations. You wanna get the medal? Hold on. You gotta get the shoe by yourself. Now we need all of you all together. Congratulations. And that concludes our awards for the evening. Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If there are citizens to be heard tonight, if you have not already, you can pick up a form to be heard and fill it out and return it to Ms. Supremani, the board secretary just there. And we'll move forward with reports. T L N update?
We will all be joining one another with folks like ourselves, school boards, superintendents and the like, next week at Day on the Hill, where we get an opportunity to do exactly what Superintendent Manuel just described. His peers just this past week, we're gonna get the opportunity, and as he also mentioned, we happen to have two West Tennesseans, both the head of the House Education Committee and the Senate Education Committee, our dear neighbors. And we're really, really excited, but we are looking for the opportunity to talk to people and let our concerns and, and exciting, I guess, adventures that we're gonna all be on with the new commissioner, and also just the new regime with Governor Lee. It's a very exciting time because there is a lot of newness and unknown, and next week we're gonna get a good opportunity for us all to not only be together as we speak and meet with, we have several meetings set up to meet with not only people that represent people in the community that we serve from an education standpoint, but also some legislators that may have similar things going on where they are. And we wanna kinda talk to them and have this great time to get together and express to them the things that are important to us, so we're really excited about that. It's my first time, I can tell you I'm excited. We have a couple of veterans here that have been, and, but again, because there is so much newness to our, our state government, I think that it's just a perfect time, kind of fresh start for us. And as we just discussed, there's a major part of potential legislation heading our way that may have a very significant impact on our school district, and we're really excited to get up there and let them know how we feel about it.
The chairman's report this evening. We have had four of our board members go to TSBA trainings. Ms. Fisher and Ms. Landers went to Paths to Promise, and Ms. Oof and Ms. Griffith went to finance training by TSBA. In addition, we had School Board Appreciation Week in all of the schools in GMSD, and we were able to go and enjoy and visit the schools and had a wonderful time with students taking us around and asking us questions, and it was a wonderful thing and very much appreciated by all of us. And Ms. Fisher, Ms. Landers, and Ms. Oof were able to go to the Houston Middle School pop-up band concert last Saturday afternoon. And I was able to go to the eighth grade open house at Houston High School, and I just want to pass along, I had some parents who have been to open houses in the past with older students who said, this was so great. And please pass on our accolades for how wonderful it was. So, good job. From people who were comparing apples to apples, good job. So that concludes the chairman's report. Financial report, Mr. Jones?
You've got your financial reports for the month ending January 31st, 2019. First, on the balance sheet, looking at the school operating fund, total assets, liabilities and fund balance are at 20.1 million. And the federal projects fund, we have reimbursements due from the Tennessee Department of Education, 391,000. Then the cafeteria fund and remaining funds, total assets, liabilities and fund balance are, again, cafeteria, 223,000. And the capital projects, 1.8 million. The health insurance fund is at 2.4 million. OPEP Trust, 2.8 million. And we've updated some of the numbers in the General Fixed Asset Account Group for building improvements and construction in progress, that is now at 84.5 million. On your statement of revenues and expenditures, just a few comments. In the school operating fund, for the month, property taxes collected were a total of 5.5 million, which represents 35% of the total budgeted. And with the additional cash inflow, we invested 6 million into the LGIP fund. The target percentages for January expenditures were administrative or support categories at 67%, instructional categories 50%, and overall, we are at 44% of total budget. And the health insurance fund, year-to-date claims are averaging $321,000, so they've dropped off quite a bit, so we're just above our budgeted average of 318,000. In the OPEP Trust Fund, the district made its annual contribution to the OPEP Trust at $725,000. And also there was an unrealized gain of $129,000 in market value. The cafeteria fund, Aramart's profit, our net income, year-to-date totals of approximately 62,000, which is now covering the district expenditures of 58,000 year-to-date. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Superintendent's report. Mr. Manuel?
We have, as always, some visuals to go along, because I was a visual learner. Jump on the screen. I think there's a delay usually, last time we were here, there was a delay.
Sorry.
So, I will not be giving this presentation, I will have somebody who's really doing the boots-on-the-ground work. Two of our exemplary employees who are really working hard to achieve one of our board's strategic goals. That's to recruit, develop, and retain exemplary teachers. And one of the ways that we do that is really working with those teachers who are new to Germantown schools. And they've actually started a program called the Blue Chips. It's an induction program for our teachers, and I will let Ms. Alyssa Stratton and Ms. Shamara Davis come up here and tell us about. But, y'all can actually come up here if y'all want by the screen. You just wanna stand right there by the table maybe.
Hi, everybody. My name's Alyssa Stratton, and this is Shamara Davis, and we are excited to share with you information on our Blue Chip induction program. I think probably the most common question that Shamara and I get when we talk about the induction program is, what in the world is a blue chip? And to kinda explain the significance behind the name Blue Chips, we have a couple analogies for you. So in the corporate world, when you think about a company that is very successful, that is reliable and increases their profits year after year, it's called a blue chip stock. And in the athletic world, when you have a very talented athlete, that athlete is called a blue chip recruit. Even in the gaming kind of world, an actual blue chip has a significance and a value to it. Well, in GMSD, teachers new to our district are our blue chips. We feel they are the best of the best in the teaching profession. Out of all of the people that our principals have interviewed, they saw something special and unique in our teachers. So for us, we really feel that our new teachers are one of our most valuable resources. And with that, we have a couple of different expectations. So for the teachers that come to GMSD, we expect for them to bring their educational talents and knowledge and support our students. But also, there's an expectation for GMSD as a district that we provide supports that help those teachers to grow in the profession. So one of the ways we do that is with our induction program. So any teacher new to GMSD, regardless of the number of years of experience that they have, they're automatically a part of our induction program. And the length of, of how long they stay in our program depends upon their tenure journey. So we have teachers that stay in the program anywhere from one to five years. And that's something that's really unique about this program. Most induction programs typically have teachers in it maybe one or two years, those first two years when they're teaching. But for GMSD, some of our teachers receive supports for the district for a full five years. We're really excited to offer that support to, to teachers that come to the district. Our guiding principle in our induction program is to provide intentional, comprehensive, and catered support to each of those teachers as they travel on their tenure journey. And sometimes that support looks different depending upon where they are in their journey. And we do accomplish this in two ways. We have district-level support, and then we have school-level support. So on the district level, I'm so proud. It's a true collaboration through all of our departments. Dr. Park and her team meet regularly with our new teachers to provide training on GMSD curriculum and data analysis. Ms. Huffman and her team meet with our teachers to provide special education strategies to help support all of the students in their classrooms. Mr. Grace and his curriculum technology trainers provide tech support and training for our new teachers. Even Mr. Haddow, he meets with our new teachers to help share the vision of GMSD, as well as the GMSD teacher expectations for our Tennessee teacher code of ethics. So that's one of the things that we think is so successful about this program, is just the partnerships that we have, starting from Mr. Manuel's support all the way down to the district office. Everyone believes in the program and then helps provide support for it. Our school-level focus, we have blue chip mentors, and they truly are the backbone of this program. I'm gonna turn it over to Shamara, and she's gonna talk to you about how our blue chip mentors provide support to our new teachers.
So in, I guess, kind of the beginning phases of our program, it was really just kind of Alyssa and I. We were really just kind of the boots-on-the-ground, trying to support teachers, but it was really hard for us to do that considering we weren't in the buildings. So over the years, again, three years in now, we've evolved, and we now currently have 15 mentors, three mentors in every one of our schools, one mentor serving our year-one blue chips, a mentor serving our year-two, and then three and beyond. It's because our teachers are in the program for up to five years, so we wanted to make sure that each year is supported by a different mentor. So that mentor kind of follows them on their tenure journey. We spoke about targeted, differentiated, but also research-based support. What we've noticed is that our teachers go through cycles in education, so we wanted to make sure that the support that we provided for them kind of followed that cycle. So when initially teachers are coming into our district, it's that physical support, then emotional support, instructional support, and then that institutional support. We did talk about student services, but I do wanna make sure that we also mention that they're also part of that partnership with our blue chips and all the other departments, because our teachers are coming to us and they need to know how, you know, to support our children, so I just wanted to make sure that I added that piece also with the emotional support piece as well. But one of the most things I think we are really proud of is it's really difficult in this time right now to leverage leadership to teachers. We don't have a lot of opportunities other than assistant principal positions for teachers in the building. So this program basically opened up 15 teacher leader positions in our district, and that's really hard to come by. So when we were part of the Teacher Leader Network a few years ago, that was one of our claims to fame, that we were able to open up these opportunities and grow teacher leaders right here in our buildings to support our teachers. So our first year, I love our little blue pen there, makes it so, I'm gonna look at it. So our first year is all things GMSD, so brand-new teachers, whether they are novice year-one or coming to us seasoned with lots of experience, will be totally immersed in everything GMSD. So our focus is teaching teachers everything they know, need to know about our district, from getting to know the district to each. from getting to know the district to each individual school's nuances. So how do you make copies, or who do you get to know in the cafeteria? Every school is very different and unique, and that mentor is there to kind of guide them through that journey. Everything they need to know about the team evaluation process, and then also the curriculum. What you'll see from year-one is it is very intense support. So that Blue Chip mentor is meeting with teachers monthly, and we're also having district-level meetings. But as our mentor or our mentee goes on this journey, they'll start to see that support kind of relinquish, okay? So it's very intensive, it's really, it's almost like RTI. They give them the most support in the beginning, and then as they go along in this journey, we're releasing some of that support. So by the end, we're letting them kind of fly free, but again, that GMSD mentor, that Blue Chip mentor is there in case they ever need anything. So they've built a relationship with this mentor throughout this journey. So year-two is our communication focus. So every year, we have a different theme. So year-one was everything you need to know about GMSD. Year-two is communication. That's a big piece as a new teacher in our district, whether you come with lots of years of experience or first-year experience. So we really teach and we help guide teachers on how to communicate with parents, how to communicate with your students, how to communicate with your colleagues. You'd be surprised, teachers don't know how to do that. And they don't know how to do that in a professional way. So we're there to kind of help and guide them. And then lastly, also how to communicate with your community members. We know it isn't out there, but that's also a part of that, year-two. Year-three is everything data. Now, I know you're probably thinking, "Why communication? Why data? Why this order?" Well, everything, of course, they're learning all of this in year-one, but this intentional focus, again, is that intentional PD. It's hard when you're learning everything at once. So if you can learn how to communicate, if you learn how to delta in your data, and then we'll move into the other ones in a moment. But if you just take the time to focus and grow in that one area, it doesn't seem so overwhelming for a teacher. Teachers have a lot on their plate, so if they can kind of fine-tune and hone in on one area, it just makes it feel a little bit easier. So year-three is everything they need to know about keys, ten-ready, looking at students' social and emotional needs, anecdotal data, everything they need to know about data is in year-three. And finally, year-four and year-five. Year-four is professional development. And you're probably saying, "Really? Teachers are learning professional development from day one." We want, again, now, year-four, they've been with us for four years. They've been attending professional development. But what we'd like to see our teachers do at this stage is move past just being a participant and an active, engaged learner in PD to actually now leading it, whether it's in a PLC, or in a faculty meeting, or even stepping out in like our district learning day like we had this past week. So we want to show that we're growing, and we're vetting, and we're growing these learners so now they're able to get back to their colleagues. And then finally, we're waiting for this, because this hasn't happened yet, we're only in year-three, an action research project. So these teachers are now going to have the opportunity to look at their school, find a need that they're passionate about, and do something in their building that addresses that need. So by year-five, we are now able to say, "This is a strong GMSD teacher. We have vetted this teacher." So when we send the names to you all as school board members, we are saying, "They're ready. They're Blue Chips."
So as the teachers and all of us travel with our teachers on their tenure journey, we think it's important to pause and recognize the successes that our teachers have had along the way. So celebrations are an integral part of our Blue Chip induction program. At the end of every year, we have what's called a pinning ceremony. And so it's a time for our Blue Chips to come together with their mentors, their principals, and Superintendent Manuel, and they actually receive a Blue Chip pin. And each year of their journey, they receive a different colored pin, too. We wanted to make sure that we had something tangible for our Blue Chips to wear proudly, and also have that pin serve as a reminder of all of the hard work that it took to get to earn that pin, but then also all of the supports that are in place in GMSD as well. And our culminating event is going to be our tenure celebration that you all are a part of every year. One thing that I'm so grateful to be a part of with GMSD is that we do build traditions around celebrating the efforts of our teachers, too. So that was just a snapshot of our Blue Chip induction program. Hopefully, you can see how we have this program bring to life our goal number two, to recruit, develop, and retain an exemplary student. So with that, that concludes our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. We move to the part of the agenda that is citizens to be heard. And I have this evening, one citizen to be heard. Okay. I have to read the policy before you come, so you might as well wait. GMSD by its policy allows persons to address the board during the citizens-to-be-heard section of its agenda, but only within certain guidelines. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at school board meetings. Thus, there is no inherent or legal right of citizens to make comments during a school board meeting. Prior to making your remarks, you must state your name, address, and the subject of your presentation. The chair would remind you that if there are several persons who are intending to express the same sentiment, GMSD board rules require that you designate one spokesperson to speak for your position. If you do not do so, and the chair determines that comments made are cumulative, the chair will direct the speaker to cease their remarks. Individuals addressing the board shall address their remarks to the chair. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. In accordance with GMSD Policy SB 1.404, remarks will be limited to three minutes unless time is extended by the board or otherwise reduced by the chairman to reflect the number of citizens to be heard. TCA number 39-17-306 provides that it is a class B misdemeanor to intentionally prevent or disrupt a school board meeting. Please be advised that any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to the aforementioned rules will not be permitted to continue or make their remarks at this meeting. This evening, one individual has indicated their desire to address the board. You will have three minutes, and your time will begin once you have said your name, your address, and the topic of your talk. So Ms. Jennifer Bell, if you will come to the podium, then we'll be able to hear you.
My name is Jennifer Bell. I just wanted to speak to you. I live at 2111 Crestwood Drive. I am speaking on behalf of a group of concerned Dogwood families about the proposed cell phone tower on the property. We are very concerned about the decision to rent ground at Dogwood to Tower Ventures for the placement of a cell phone tower. There are many studies showing short-term and long-term health consequences of being exposed to radio frequency radiation, including headaches, memory problems, dizziness, depression, sleep problems, increased rates of suicide, and cancer. I brought a list of published studies documenting these effects, and I can give those to you. In 2004, there was a study involving a group of firefighters who could not function on the job after a cell phone tower was put on their station. They had severe headaches, inability to sleep, all the symptoms that I just mentioned. SPECT scans showed brain abnormalities in all the firefighters tested, specifically a pervasive hyperexcitability of neurons, which suggested the exposure to RF radiation was causing the neurons to continually fire without the benefit of rest. Without rest, the brain neurons die. Their tower was measured at 1/1,000 of the allowed limits set by the FCC. All of these men were fit and strong and were not on the hazmat team. Imagine, if fit, strong men can fall ill due to cell phone tower radiation, what about young, developing children? These firefighters fought to have California fire stations exempted from tower placement, and they won. Dr. Anthony Miller, a physician and epidemiologist with an impressive CV, including Director of Epidemiology at the National Cancer Institute of Canada, consultant to the U.S. National Cancer Institute and the World Health Organization, says, "The weight of evidence supports the classification of RF radiation as a human carcinogen, implying hazard at all levels of exposure." My recommendation, this is him speaking, is to reduce exposure as much as possible, especially to children. Cell phone towers should be kept as far away from children in places like schools as far as possible. The FCC guidelines were made in 1996, before many of us even owned a cell phone, and these have not been updated. Their guidelines are based on the thermal effects of radiation and do not include the non-thermobiological damage. Also, while it would be great to think that the FCC would protect us, please know that the FCC is what is known as a captured agency. A captured agency is one where the appointees come from the industries that they are supposed to protect us from. The current AFCG Chairman, Ajit Pai, is a former lobbyist and attorney for Verizon. A lot of research has come out in the 23 years since the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Another concern I have about this situation is that the contract is for 35 years with a mutual out clause, meaning that both the school district and Tower Ventures would have to agree to remove the tower if our children and teachers begin to fall ill due to RF exposure. That is ridiculous. What company who is making money is going to agree to that? 35 years is a very long time. Please realize that any financial benefit that the school district is receiving from renting this land to Tower Ventures may be lost if legal action is taken against the school district in the years to come. Please think very carefully about the long-term legal, financial, and public health ramifications of this decision. I urge you to find a way to kill the deal before our children and community have to suffer the consequences. We need to find a safer piece of property for our children.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which has one item that was added, item 8D. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve all the items in the consent agenda. Second?
The motion was made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Oof. Ms. Superintendent, will you call the roll?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Lutte?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item pertains to Houston High School's security improvements. Mr. Kathy, would you like to speak to those?
Before you this evening is the approval of the bid for security improvements here at Houston High School, specifically putting a door that goes directly into the main office, as well as fencing in the courtyard area and fencing in the area between the main building and the A building. The approval processes that we had to go through, anytime you change egress, you have to go back through the Fire Marshal's Office. We've been through those approval processes, as well as local reviews. Preparation of bid packages, which are attached to the agenda. The low bidder was Grinder, Tabor, Grinder, and the amount of $236,000 and just a little bit over that. That is who we're recommending to award the bid to this evening.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kathy? The chair would entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Kathy.
I move to approve the awarding of the Houston High Security Improvement Bid, number FY 2019-0001, to Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder, in the amount of $236,838.
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion was made by Ms. Landers and seconded by Ms. Fisher. Is there any discussion?
I'm glad to see this come to fruition. I know we've been talking about the need for some security improvements for a long time. I do think we might want to mention the timetable on this. Once we get this approved, then what would be the timetable?
Yeah, I can speak to it. Like, the goal would be to finish this before the children are back for Fall of 2019.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy. Are you ready to vote? Ms. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Lutte?
Yes.
Thank you. And the final board action item was an item added during the work session pertaining to the resolution to our state legislatures. Ms. Landers, are you going to make the motion?
I didn't write down all the words.
You didn't write down the words?
I can read.
I can. Would you like to make the motion? Is there a motion?
Yes. There's definitely a motion. How about there's a motion that we replace the wording of Opportunity Scholarship. Yeah, or remove the wording of Opportunity Scholarship from our resolution regarding vouchers and Opportunity Scholarships, and replace, or and put in Educational Savings Accounts slash vouchers.
School vouchers.
School vouchers. In every instance in the reservation.
I have typed in the last term.
It's not refreshing.
It's not showing that book.
No. I'll refresh again.
No, I've tried. Yeah, it's not refreshing.
It's not refreshing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I move that we strike Opportunity Scholarship Program and insert Educational Savings Accounts slash School Vouchers and/or any other similar funding mechanisms in our resolutions opposing such items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes, I think we need to just speak that this is, this is an important resolution. We passed it before because we feel very strongly, school vouchers are a detriment to the funding of our public education system in Tennessee. And when you look at Educational Savings Accounts, they are very similar in process and very similar in impact as to, as would be a school voucher program. And that is the new wording that seems to be coming from the state with our, our new legislators that are in place and our new governor that's in place. And I think we need to be very clear that anything that removes funding from public education is damaging to the education of the children of Tennessee, all the children of Tennessee. And the responsibility of legislatures, legislators, is to provide funding for public education for all students in Tennessee. So, we feel a little passionate about that.
Any further discussion? Ms. Superintendent, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Lutte?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes our board action items this evening. Our announcements are that Community Tour Day happens on Wednesday, February 13th, at Houston High School. And if you want to go to the website and sign up to take a tour, we would love for you to come and be a part of seeing the amazing things that are happening at Houston High. Next week, February 18th and 19th, is the TSBA Day on the Hill, and all of your school board and your superintendent will be present to talk with our legislators. And our next board meeting will be March 19th at City Hall at 6:30. And with that, there being no further agenda items, we stand adjourned.